Good evening, the Thursday, February thirteenth. Okay.
No, it's not.
Good evening, the Thursday, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty, regular meeting of the Brisbane Planning Commission will now come to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Gomez?
Here.
Commissioner Gooding?
Here.
Commissioner Mackin?
Here.
Commissioner Patel?
Here.
Commissioner Seisan?
Here. Adoption of the agenda, may I have a motion to adopt, please?
I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Consent calendar, is there anyone who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion? I see no one, may I have a motion to adopt, please?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is oral communications, and I have one request here from Nancy Laxman.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Nancy Laxman, I'm a Brisbane resident. I fully realize that this is not on your agenda tonight, and I do not expect you to comment, because I know it's not on your agenda. I'm here to talk about the short-term rentals, no-host, that you'll be looking at in a couple weeks. Something that was brought to our attention in my, on my street, Humboldt, and I wanted to share with you right away what is happening to the short-term no-host rental. If you want to look at the attachment that I've sent and given to you, and I've also including for the record, this is now a current listing on Airbnb. A four-level house on my block, three doors up, sleeping twenty-five. This is the new era of short-term rentals, no-host. Four hundred and fourteen dollars a night, just started about two months ago, and as you can imagine, our street has completely become overloaded with cars. If you turn the page, this is a direct copy of the listing of an Airbnb. You can pull it up, all you have to do is put Airbnb, go to Brisbane, and say fifteen-plus guests, and you'll find this. Newly installed five-ton industrial-sized air conditioning unit and central heating, five-ton. And these are my favorites, and that's why I've highlighted it. We are blessed with parking along the streets, comma, do not need to worry about street cleaning here, comma, park where you can as long as you're not blocking someone's driveway. Isn't that nice? First come, first served, suggested to be here before six P M. for even more street parking. I park at six fifteen, so I guess I'm out of luck. Next page, guest access, entire home is yours to enjoy. If you'd like to host an event, there may be an additional charge, depending on the total amount of people, how many staying and coming, and what the type of event you're hosting. Two nights ago, it was a wedding, saw everybody in their outfits. And I have to admit, and my letter is just sort of summarizing my thoughts, I've had no issues with the guests. The guests have actually been very pleasant and polite, I walked up two blocks with one yesterday, walking my dog. I just wanted you to understand what the nature of this is starting to happen. I believe, I did listen, I have read the ordinance, a year ago, I didn't have an opinion when I did the survey, but I certainly have an opinion now, having experienced it. I completely agreed with council members that said the importance in our town is housing, I've always been a strong advocate of housing. This takes everything off the market for this house. I, in the summarization of my letter, and this is all I'm going to be quoting here, is I think there's additional concerns that should be incorporated into the current ordinance. Maximum number of people for an entire house should, that's going to be advertised. This needs to be set, we don't really say that in the ordinance. We should get a copy of the advertising on file as part of the application process. We should have a walkthrough by an inspector determine up-to-fire and safety code standards. When this house was sold last year, it was a four-bedroom house, it's now advertised as seven. Review if permit, permits were obtained for major improvements or rooms or true bedrooms. Verifiable off-street parking. This location has a garage, that is not a garage anymore, it's not a bedroom, it's been open quite a bit when I walked the street. But now there's a pillar in the middle of the garage, supporting the floor above it. So, yeah, I doubt if it's going to be used as a garage. So as you can see from the second photo, all of the parking now is on the street. I also feel that each of these applications needs to have a six-month permit for the first year on the program. It could be renewable to full year if compliant, no complaints. I also believe that the ordinance that you're considering is re-reviewed in a year, so that we can establish new guidelines based on any learnings. So my overall feeling is against the short-term rentals, no-host rentals. We have some really, really wonderful neighbors in town, I know quite a few of them, that do have Airbnb, they rent out a room to help with mortgage. It really helps them stay in town and in their house, they're doing an exceptional job. But this particular situation has really, really thrown our neighborhood, our street, into a bit of a flux. So, you know, we're repositioning our cars, we're talking to each other, which is a good thing, but I just wanted to bring this to your attention for your consideration in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission about an item that's not on tonight's agenda? Okay, I see no one. We'll turn to written communications, the commission did receive some letters, twenty-two in total regarding the subject of tonight's public hearing. So twenty-one was in support and one against. So we will now turn to the public hearing. And it's concerning use permit, U P dash six dash one-nine, design permit, D P dash two dash one-nine, and grading permit, E X dash two dash one-nine. Thirty-six through fifty San Bruno Avenue, N C R O dash two neighborhood commercial district. The applicant is seeking to extend and modify the previously approved planning applications, U P dash two dash one-seven, D P dash one dash one-seven, and E X dash four dash one-seven. To develop a nine thousand five hundred five square foot lot with a three-story mixed-use senior housing building with sixteen one-bedroom units. John Goldman is the applicant, Force Power Holdings LLC is the owner. Staff, may we have a report?
Yes, thank you. In two thousand seventeen, the city approved a design permit, a use permit, and grading permit for a three-story mixed-use development at thirty-six to fifty San Bruno Avenue. That's on a ninety-five-hundred square foot lot that has previously been developed as a private parking lot, that was used to serve the Twenty-three Club when it was operational. Those permits had a two-year expiration period if the building permit had not been obtained by that time. Prior to the expiration date, the applicant applied for an extension of the permits with some modifications to the original design. Note that the municipal code allows that a three-year time extension may be granted on the design permit by the planning commission. The use permit and grading review don't have code-required expiration dates, but they would follow with the design permit extension as they're all part of the same project, of course. The approved project was for an Art Deco-inspired three-story structure with sixteen one-bedroom senior housing units on the second and third floors. On the ground floor, there was a fourteen-space parking garage, which was lined with two small storefront spaces. Those overarching parameters would remain the same, but the applicant has requested some modifications to the design, as I mentioned. I'll outline the key modifications and then walk through some of the architect's drawings comparing the two thousand seventeen approval to the current two thousand twenty proposal. First, on the architecture, well, the approved design was based on the Art Deco style, the revised design incorporates a stronger Art Deco theme. Design revisions include the addition of pilasters extending from the base of the building to approximately four feet above the top edge of the building. The building would also have greater articulation with deeper bay windows on the front and rear, and varying appearance between the residential levels and the ground floor. Building's front would also be offset by two feet at its middle in the ground plane. On setback, on the rear setback in two thousand seventeen, a concession was granted in accordance with the state's density bonus law to allow one-foot rear setback, or ten-foot rear setback would otherwise be required. The building design has been modified so that rear setback would be slightly greater at one foot four inches at the second-level deck. And the rest of the rear portion of the building would set back even farther from the lot line. Note that the state's density bonus law requires the city to grant up to two concessions to the development standards if requested. One concession is for projects where at least ten percent of the total housing units are for lower-income households, and another concession where at least five percent are for very low income. That equates to two lower-income and one very low-income unit for this development, and that's what's proposed. On the height of the building, the applicant has requested to utilize the second concession for the height to be over thirty-five feet. The height of the building was previously approved at just over thirty-one feet to the parapet level, and just over thirty-two to the top of the elevator enclosure. In this modification, the building height would be approximately thirty-two feet ten inches to that, that parapet or the top of the roof edge. And that's at the highest point on the downslope side of the building, with the pilasters extending as high as thirty-seven feet. A roof deck would also now be included, and the height of the elevator enclosure access to that deck would be forty-five feet, with the stairs being a bit lower than that. The roof deck area and access stairs, an elevator would all be set back from the front and rear edges of the building by about twenty-five feet or more, so they would not be readily visible from the street, except from a distance. Again, while a variance would normally be required for the height to exceed thirty-five feet in this district, state density bonus law allows the applicant to, to apply for a height allowance as a concession as part of this design permit extension. For the interior of the building, the original design included a center courtyard on the second and third floors for the residents to gain entry to their units. That would now be enclosed to provide protection from the elements between the garage and their front doors. That modification, along with the articulation of the building, also allowed for somewhat larger housing units, as well as somewhat larger ground-floor commercial spaces. Residential units would be approximately a hundred square feet larger than was previously proposed, with the largest being at six hundred and eighty-eight square feet. But they would remain as one-bedroom, one-bath units. The two-ground-floor retail spaces would total seven hundred and seventy-six square feet, or as it was previously approved, at four sixty-four. And a minimum is, is generally required in the code of six hundred, but the planning commission allowed for an exception in that previous application. There are also some minor modifications to the site work, I think I went too fast here on the slides. Minor modifications to the site work and landscaping concept plans, first, since at the ground floor of the building would be set back further from the lot lines, both the front and rear, more landscaping would be provided at the front of the building. And access to the entire ear, rear yard would now be possible. Also, an approximately nine-foot-high arbor has been added to provide a shaded outdoor dining area in the rear yard. At the closest corner, it would be two and a half feet from the rear lot line, and it would also comply with the setback concession that's being requested. The grading would, for this proposal, would total approximately two hundred and fifty-one cubic yards and a hundred and seventy-five cubic yards of export. This is a bit more than originally proposed, but is still, still fairly small volume for, for this development, since the site is already fairly flat. That grading would allow for a walkway directly from the garage to the southern portion of the rear yard. I have a few slides that are included here, and I'll just talk briefly on these to compare the two thousand seventeen, two thousand twenty designs graphically. And the architect is here, and he may want to talk in more detail. So first, the perspective drawings here show a stronger Art Deco design style with the two thousand twenty proposal on the bottom right there. The ground floor plan from two thousand seventeen shows the building pretty squared off with just a foot setback at the rear property line here, where the lot line jogs in towards the building. As you can see, the ground floor storefronts are, are quite small here, with one being proposed as just a window box, and that's down in the bottom edge, right down in here. And on the two thousand twenty revision, that shows the building would now have articulation on the rear side, which provides an opportunity, as I mentioned, for that pathway connecting the two-yard segments. On the front, there is more landscaping proposed and larger storefront spaces as well. In the parking lot, there's a reconfiguration of the space, given the, the shape of the building now, but the actual number of parking spaces is the same as before and is compliant with the code. This image shows the two thousand seventeen floor plans for the second and third floors, as well as the roof plan on the right. And as you can see through the middle, this was the open kind of entry courtyard, which would have sat above the garage level. Did I go too far? I went too far. So on the two thousand twenty designs, again, that's enclosed now on the second and third floor. So the units would be accessed by common hallways, a roof deck would be added in the, towards the center, again, of, of the roof. And in order to have that feature, both stairs and an elevator would be required so that it's accessible for handicapped. Note that the roof deck features would be, again, towards the center of the roof, so they wouldn't be readily visible from the street level, except at distance. The two thousand seventeen building elevations are shown here, and the Art Deco theme is drawn more in the details of, of the railings and materials. And the two thousand twenty proposal, as you can see, it's a stronger Art Deco design with the pilasters and their aluminum cap ornaments on the top of each. Also, there's more window coverage along the site front edge, and likewise on the rear as well. And we also have trellises proposed along both the north and south sides of the building. In summary, the extension of the project timeframe and the proposed modifications comply with all of the findings under which it was originally approved. As I mentioned, it's a stronger example of Art Deco style with, than originally proposed, and has greater articulation on the front and rear sides. The increase in residential floor area sizes would not change the parking requirement, which would remain conforming with the municipal code for senior housing. The size of the ground floor retail spaces would become conforming now, but would still be small. While the height, the certain belt, building elements are above thirty-five feet, these may be permitted as a concession consistent with the state's density bonus law. And the project would still meet the findings, most notably those regarding the scale and form of the building. So in closing, staff recommends approval of the requested three-year time extension with the proposed modifications, the adoption of the resolution that was provided in your agenda report.
Thank you, Ken. Does anyone have a follow-up, a question for staff?
I, I just, I have a quick question. Oftentimes, I bring up the subject of urban forestry or additions to, you know, canopy with respect to what's appropriate, the right, the right tree species. Within the design, I wasn't, it was difficult for me to gauge if we were going to see an actual increase, or is it, is it neutral to what, what we're gonna, what we're seeing, what, you know, what we currently have in, in the area, I wasn't exactly clear.
So, let me go back to the, the site plan. So there's not a whole lot in the way of landscaping or, or trees currently on the site, and, and this dot, design is more of a concept plan at this point. The idea that you would have some screening in that southern corner, that southern triangle, I would imagine a, a, at least one tree and probably some larger shrubs possibly there for screening. And then you have opportunity around the edge on the northern part as well. I, I think overall, you'll end up with more, more green and on the trees, I, I think we're pretty limited on trees, actually on the site, they're more at the front edge of the site. And there are going to be some street tree replacements at that front edge that are shown there. So in terms of actual trees, it's probably going to be pretty neutral, but on the whole, it's going to be more landscaping than what's currently there.
Well, my, my, my general concern is that as we, as we look at new, you know, new buildings within the existing context of the neighborhoods, that we, that we identify any and all opportunities to put the, you know, the appropriate trees that are a net increase to what our current urban forestry is. That, that's just a general design principle that I, that I like to see, and I wanted to just bring that up for the commission.
Okay, thank you, anyone else?
Can I just dovetail off of what you said? There's street tree replacement, and there was mention, I was here on the previous incarnation of this in two thousand seventeen, and I recall mention of trying to retain trees on the back of the teen center lot, and I may have overlooked it. Has there been any mention about that again?
You're talking about retaining that tree, that's?
That, that's what was mentioned in the previous permit application.
Right. It's, it's still shown in this drawing, I actually went by the, the site again, just to kind of look specifically at the condition of the trees. That one, and I'm not an arborist, but it looks like it's in declining health at this point. It's something, we do have a condition of approval, which actually carried forward from the last permit, to have an arborist come out and look at those existing trees that are on the edges and, and provide recommendations that the, that the contractor would need to follow during construction to, to try to retain those trees to the degree possible. An arborist may come and say that that tree is, is just, since it's already failing, that's my, my take on it, they may have a different recommendation there and say that it's, it's, it may end up being more of a replacement kind of a situation than a retaining it.
Okay, so just for, to further clarify, which I, I appreciate what you said, Commissioner Gomez, and, and I think it would be helpful if we can have an answer. There were other trees on the parking lot which have already been removed. On the front side of the parking lot, there was at least one very mature native California buckeye. I'd like to know what requirements are in place for tree replacement, or what they were conveyed to the property owner for tree replacement.
I, let me double-check the conditions, I, I think we may have had a one-to-one requirement, if, and if it couldn't be accomplished, an in-lu fee?
Okay, because that's where I'm, I'm headed to, that would be my next question, because I think, Commissioner Gomez, you were kind of driving at that, because we, we see the street tree replacements, but the rest of the vegetation and landscaping at the back of the property appears to be shrubs, small ornamental plants, not a tree replacement.
Yeah, so page G one sixty?
One sixty?
G point one, point six zero.
Okay.
Okay, this talks, actually, the one above it as well. The first, the, the second and the third bullets speak to tree replacements, tree replacements shall be on at least a one-to-one basis, of at least twenty-four-inch box size, smaller sizes may be requested on a case-by-case basis in writing, based on specific criteria. That'd be to the planning director, and then the same kind of thing for the street trees directed to the city engineer or an in-lu fee there as well.
Okay, I think just going forward, it would be helpful both for us and the public if we had an enumeration of exactly what is being in-lu fees made or tree replacement, because it's not clear. And I think just to satisfy the public has shown some propensity to want to see vegetation removal, at least have some other alternative location or replacement. And I'd like to at least satisfy everyone's curiosity going forward, that we know that's really being done and how it's being done, because that question comes to me as a commissioner all the time. And so, if, if we can try to do that going forward, so we know.
So I, I'd hesitate to put a, a dollar amount in here, I know in the past, I've, I've approved tree replacements on other sites that aren't development sites, where we've taken an in-lu fee, and essentially, that's a calculation that the Public Works Director, City Engineer, makes at, at that time, based on what it costs the city to actually do a new street tree.
Okay, I have one more question, but I'll wait if someone else wants to do. No, I don't, so i- i- in terms of landscaping, could you, for everyone's benefit, we see in the report what I guess Public Works would refer to as bulb-outs, and I've discussed with you, and I've asked you for some information, but I think it would be helpful to the public and fellow commissioners to understand why we have two bulb-outs in front of this building and the rationale for removing two parking spaces.
Right, so the bulb-outs are one here and one here, and I, I did talk with the city engineer as a follow-up to our conversation, and, and what he said is essentially that's, and within this, the public right-of-way area, that's really his purview, and, you know, he looked at this at the time and, and took it as more of a comment that they would provide for green infrastructure, and that is for stormwater treatment, which is essentially the, the state water board has a municipal regional permit that the various cities need to comply with. And they have put it on the cities to have essentially no missed opportunities, but also to be preparing a green infrastructure plan. And so we, in our general plan update on the circulation element, we included policy language about not missing opportunities for green infrastructure. What he also said, now that I followed up with him on that, is he shared the concern that you, or he recognized the concern that you have about loss of parking, and through the building permit process, and we do have a condition here that essentially puts the final design, it really restates what he's already going to final design, it really restates what he's already going to be doing, is to relook at, at the, the design here to essentially come up with something where we're not losing those street parking spaces. So, so that frontage there that you see out in the street, it, it looks like that will need to be changed, subject to the city engineer's approval.
And, and again, for, for the rest of the commission, I asked you about the potential if we're trying to do bio swales and handle runoff, why that wasn't located on the rear portion of the property, and you gave me an explanation, I think is worth hearing.
Right, so the, on the rear portion, so there's two different sets of rules in the municipal regional permit. One is for treatment onsite, which we call C3, and essentially that's, another name is low-impact development, where we're looking at, at capturing stormwater onsite and infiltrating it into the ground. Sometimes that will go through an actual treatment unit and connect with the storm drain. In this case, it's, it's essentially infiltrating into the landscaping in the rear yard. There's also some landscaping at the very front edge as well, that will treat that. And then the, the part that we just talked about on the right-of-way at the street level is really to capture what's out in front in the street, as that's directed back to that, that curb edge there. So it's two different pieces of it.
So when you say to capture what's out in front at the street, are you talking about on the public sidewalk, or are you talking about what's coming down the street itself?
Both.
Both, okay. Okay. And, um, just noting and highlighting that with two retail spaces, the last time this came before the commission in 2017, there was a bit of controversy about retail with no parking. I noted there's three guest spaces inside, that may or may not be applicable. We were told at the time there would be walk-by business or maker spaces, not anything heavy retail, so that apparently has changed. And however, the Brisbane code does not require that parking in this district for retail. So my concern was removing two spaces right in front of two enlarged storefronts could cause some problems. And, and in conjunction with that is the fact of its proximity to the most congested major intersection, other than at Bayshore, five streets converging, and that anyone using services of a retail establishment might be encouraged to double park, and it's not a good place to start setting that up. So I, I, I strongly, I, I appreciate your checking with the city engineer, the bulbouts, I get it, but it just doesn't seem maybe that that's appropriate here. So, enough said from me.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Patel, did you want to say something?
No, I have no questions.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. So I'll open the public hearing, and we will hear from the applicant.
Okay, I'm John Goldman of Goldman Architects, San Francisco. Just a few clarifications, of course, I can answer any questions you might have. I took notes on the tree conversation just now, and, um, let me get to that site plan. There's an existing tree right in the middle here, that we're removing and replacing it with this tree. One of the reasons we set the front back is to get more landscaping and more stormwater management area. This tree, in the rear yard, there's a lot of opportunities for new trees, like for instance here, we're showing one, smaller trees, but, and these other areas, that's the existing tree right here, but this is the one that Ken says may be ill. So if it is ill, we'll certainly replace it with another one. But I'm a, I'm a tree lover too, so I mean, we're gonna, I don't have a landscape architect on board yet, I got a good one in mind, and so we're certainly gonna try to get as many trees as we can, and, you know, some heavy landscaping. There's certainly a lot of opportunity for it here in the rear, all along here. And the fact that we've set the front back quite a bit, this is all permeable, it's either landscaping or permeable paving. We were originally asked to add those bulbouts by Public Works to handle, as Ken said, storm runoff in the existing sidewalk and street. I actually agree with you that it doesn't probably make less sense in turn, in front of the storefront, so if the city now says we can get rid of them, I'll be delighted to do so. And we'll figure out how to manage all the stormwater onsite, which we're quite familiar with, because San Francisco has some pretty severe requirements as well. So, and, so we have good civil engineers who are very used to dealing with stormwater management issues, and a very good landscape architect. So this is really conceptual, the landscaping this time, but just wanted to point out that there's, there's actually a lot of room here, because we set the building back in, in, in both the front and the, and the rear to do this. Let's see here. Oh, let me go back here for a moment. Ken pointed out right here, you, you could see how we moved the building back from the closest point of the property line. The reason for that is to provide access to all the outdoor spaces, and you can actually get to the outdoor spaces from two different points in the parking garage. One here, and one here. There's also a restroom in the back, so people out in the outdoor spaces have access to a nearby, you know, non-gender restroom there. Plus, we've provided 16 bicycle spaces, one per unit, so everybody has a place to park their bike, and that is right here. You see eight there, but they're on stackers, a special kind of stacker that has hydraulic, so even if you're not super-strong, it does a lot of work for you. One of our goals was to get a lot more, you know, commercial space than the prior scheme, Ken described that. Another goal was to eliminate the outdoor courtyard area, because I think if you're, you, you drive in, it's raining, you park in the garage, you don't want to have to go outside again before going in your front door. The other issue in the prior scheme was that if you're in your living room, you're looking across to the next living room about 20 feet away. I mean, everything was lining up visually. We, we, so the privacy wasn't, wasn't ideal. And of course, the, the basic development of the scheme is meant to articulate, it's a, it's a long, it's a wide site, and we were trying to, first of all, if you look at this, this plan here, you'll see there's two different types of bays, bay shapes, and the building itself is split in the middle. The idea is to make it look like two buildings, I mean, they're related buildings, of course, but they have different bay windows and different depths. We're trying to break up this long facade into a more vertical appearance, and we do that by splitting the whole building, as well as creating the 16-foot modules along the street facade, as well as the rear facade. You can see here how this works. Backing up just a moment, we have designed these, you know, that each unit is, is adaptable, accessible, all of the, there aren't, they're, they're all rolling showers in the bathrooms, there's no, there's no tubs, so you can roll, if you're in a wheelchair, you can just roll right in, and that's what we're, what we're showing. There's adequate, there's plenty of closet space and, you know, adequate-sized kitchens. The units are quite a bit bigger than the prior scheme, that was one of our goals. And also, okay, the issue of height, it sounds terrible, 45-foot high building, no, it's not really a 45-foot high building. It, it's a 45-foot height at the top of the elevator penthouse. The building itself's about a foot seven higher than before. Now, the 45-foot only occurs, you know, right, right there. And, and we can't help that, because even using the lowest overhead elevator on the market, which is what we're gonna do, you end up with about 13 foot six above the roof. We can't really go lower, if we, if we could, we would. Now, in terms of the stair enclosures themselves, and you need two by code, to buy two exits off the roof, if you take a look at this, it's a little hard to see here, but we actually, in the shape of these roofs, follow the slope of the stair down, so they don't have a flat roof. So, and Marox will do an absolute minimum height in those stair enclosures, seven-foot, at least by code you can have, and then this, the enclosure slope roof follows the stair down, and it goes down again. So we're really trying to minimize the bulk of those visually, plus they're in the middle, far from the street, and the elevator is far from the street. And I think if you look at the perspectives, it's not visi, it's not really visible from the street views, our perspectives are taken from street views, and we get to that in a moment, I'll show you. And, and also, as Ken pointed out, that we're putting that roof deck right in the middle, so you can't really see, you can't see that from the surrounding streets either, because we're far away, you know, from the facades. So that was all very intentional, try to get everything that was taller in the middle away from the facades. Okay, so, elevations are, you know, obviously misleading, because everything, but you can see that, that penthouse of the elevator does stick up higher, but when you get to the perspectives, it's a whole nother story. Okay, here we go. These three perspectives, you can only see a bit of the elevator in one of them, right, right there. And, so, you, and, and these are accurate, I mean, you know, we use Revit, it's, it's quite accurate, and you can place your point exactly on the street. So, you're not really gonna see that elevator, except for maybe a little bit from certain points. You can see here the, the 16-foot basically module articulation, further articulation occurring within the facade. These pilasters, you know, they could be, they're obviously Art Deco influenced elements. I'm a big fan of deco and modern. We're working on a Timothy Fluger building on Ocean Avenue right now, and he's my favorite architect, and, you know, he was like the best proponent and practitioner of deco and modern architecture in the Bay area in the 30s. One of my heroes, and I'm actually working on one, restoring one of his buildings now, so that's pretty exciting. But anyway, this is something, this is a style I've been into since like 1980. I've actually collected deco and modern industrial design objects, so I'm thrilled that I could do that here. You know, it was already established that that was a style that was interesting to you, and so I was very happy to further develop the style and make it more clearly in that style. This gives you some idea of, you know, how, how the massing works, and, and these are probably the best perspectives, because they, they do show you the views from the street. We kind of made the trees look a little less dense than they really would be, just so you can see the building behind, but in fact, they'd be a denser foliage than this would indicate. And, and, and on these blank, mostly blank property line walls, we'd like to make them green walls, you know, by putting trellises on them and having vines creeping fig, for instance, can grow down the wall and really make a green wall. When we made it totally green, it crashed our computer, because every leaf gets rendered, so that is where, but in fact, it will be denser than this indicates. I mean, it really should become a totally green wall. You hardly see the stucco behind it. And then the view from the back, you know, again, we're, we're articulating them as really separate units, looking like separate units in a row, almost like row houses. Again, trying to break up the long horizontality of the site, and then the, on the lower right there, you can see some ideas about how we can develop the trellises and landscaping and furnishings, but I imagine we can get that green roof on top of that trellis structure as well, that would be the goal, not shown here in the rendering, but, yeah. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about anything having to do with this project.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Patel?
When you were doing your design, what kind of design things did you include in this building to sort of protect some of the privacy concerns that 200 and through 232 Mariposa Street may have?
Yeah.
Those are first, those are some smaller houses-
Right.
-that will be ready-
Let me back up here, and see if I can, whoops. I think the two, this would be right here. Right, that's 200 Mariposa, I mean, it's hard to tell. I mean, mostly it's this blank green wall. What I'm planning on doing, see, see how these are sort of looking like double-hung, well, they are, double-hung windows, but the lower pane of this would be translucent glazing, and the upper would be clear, so that when you're in there, you can see the view of the sky, but you're not looking in your neighbor's yard. And we do that a lot on property line windows.
Okay.
And that's the concept here. Same, possibly, I don't know what's going in the adjacent site, I mean, I haven't heard of any project planned there yet, so I'm not sure we would need to do that on this wall as well. But we do also move that wall in, as you see, so it's further from the property as well. So that's, we were thinking about getting it further away wherever there's windows from the Mariposa, 200 Mariposa, but, yeah. It's something we, we think about quite a bit, actually, it's the privacy of property line window walls. Anything else?
Commissioner McInnes?
Thank you. In the previous incarnation of this, there were questions about solar. Is there any solar incorporated?
Yes, absolutely. One of the reasons I wanted to provide a roof deck is because it, and, and with stairs and another, it also makes it easier to service the solar panels, which we aren't showing yet, but let me back up, because there's plenty of roof to do it. You can see here, because of the way we put the people in the middle, that leaves space on each side for solar. And I, I remember reading somewhere about a two-foot maximum on solar panels. My best friend since the fourth grade was one of the, found, one of the big guys in Sun Power, he's since held his position, but he explained to me that flat panels right on the roof, which is one of their systems, is almost as effective as angling the panels, because the reason is, when you angle panels, they start shading each other, so you can't cover the entire roof with panels. And so if you, but with flat panels, you can, because you don't shade each other. So if you look at that, what you lose in the efficiency of not angling, you gain in more area. So I would expect these will be flat right on the roof.
And also, in terms of the landscaping shown, particularly in the back and the hanging, nice effect with the hangover plantings. Have you given any thought, not required, to rainwater capture, to water that landscaping?
I haven't gotten there yet, because without getting a civil on board, I'm not sure yet, all the different strategies for the stormwater management, but that may be one of the good strategies, and-
Small cistern or something.
Sure. It's possible that a, a holding tank will be required to offset when the water's put into your system compared to the actual time of the storm. That same cistern could possibly be used for landscape, some water supply. So, but, that's definitely something we're gonna talk to the civil about on part of the stormwater management scheme.
And, and I would just commend you on the design compared to the one we saw before, and I, I understand that's all my subjective, but you have done more than credible justice to deco.
Oh, thank you.
There's good and bad, and this is really-
Thanks.
You, you've created something more of a landmark, which is really appreciated for Brisbane.
Yeah, well, thank you for saying that. It's one of my, as I said, it's one of my favorite styles, I'm a huge fan of the style, collect those objects, I have posters of an era.
It, it shows, because you, you've created something that, that's picked up the details, simplified, but it's a very handsome structure.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for saying so.
Yeah, the, the two retail spaces are pretty modest.
Pretty small, yeah.
Can you give us a clue what, what kinds of uses you would anticipate being consistent with that, that small space?
Well, of course, I'm a coffee drinker, so one of the first things that comes up is a cafe. These are actually bigger than a lot of cafes I go to in San Francisco. That's one possibility, dry cleaners could easily fit in there. We'd wanna, I think I'd wanna, you know, study the, the neighborhood and see what's needed, and I, I haven't done that yet, but I think there's, there's plenty of small, obviously, it's way too small for a restaurant, so that's not happening. Could be a deli, though, that doesn't require cooking. There's a fondue restaurant right around the corner from me, that's probably smaller than, than these, and they do good business. They don't, they have, they don't have, they don't cook in their kitchen. They just use prepared food and they heat up fondue sauces, so I, you know, that could, you know, there's, there's a lot of things I think will fit here, but not a full-service restaurant, no way.
Thank you.
I was, I was just curious about the solar panels. How much percentage of the rooftop do you expect, you know, the solar panels to take up?
Well, I mean, there's nothing really limiting us, let me see if I can get to the roof plan. It's about two-thirds possibly, I mean, I think the middle thir, okay. If you just look at this, it looks to me like about 60% of the total roof.
Okay, great.
I mean, there's nothing, there's really no reason you couldn't put them here and here. It's, it's not meant for people to be walking there, but the fact that you can get up there makes it really easy to service these and make sure everything keeps working right.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now hear from the public, Paul Buscall.
Paul Buscall, 532 Alvarado. Thank you, commissioners. I was here when they first proposed this development, and like most people in Brisbane that have responded favorably, it's much needed, and I thought that was a real brilliant idea that they came up with, to be able to provide for seniors and the smaller units- And the smaller units make it to where they could, uh, accomplish more availability than larger units. So they did a good job. And, um, as far as those, uh, did you say bulbouts? I believe those would be on top of the, uh, SFPUC's right-of-way uh, for a sixty-inch Crystal Springs Pipeline Number Two that runs through there. So they usually don't let anything permanent be put on top of their right-of-way, so. I'm sure that'll all come out when they USA the, the site and the street. But I am here tonight to ask that you, um, provide them the extension and the modifications. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Okay, I see no one can have a motion to close the public hearing.
Move that we close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, discussion. Anyone have any comments, or? Commissioner Mackin?
I always have something to say, sorry. I would like to, I, I, I'm, I'm actually very thrilled with the design. I, I think it's just, it's formidable, and it's easy to add buildings in town that are utilitarian, and they're not bad-looking, but to put something with that much detail and thought, I was, I was really honestly impressed. And it, and it's a welcome sight at that location, because it is a focal point in town. And so it's something lovely that everyone will drive by and go, nice building. So I appreciate that. Concerns last time about parking, I, I would like to, in, personally, I, I think this should get approved, but I would like to send the message back, the bulbout should not be there. And additionally, I'd like to make a recommendation, City Engineer, just to alleviate what in 2017 people were complaining about the parking in that block. Now it's 2020, and I can vouch, it's worse. I would like to recommend that perhaps the City Engineer look at that block, that first block up to Mariposa on the northward side of San Bruno to see if there's room for diagonal parking, because that would alleviate some of the congestion. And it would provide some additional parking for the retail in the area. So those would be my two caveats with approval, to put those suggestions in.
Sorry, where would the diagonal parking be?
It would be in that block, so there's an existing, there's twenty-three San Bruno, one San Bruno, and then there's an apartment building. So it would be on that side of the street. It was explained to me by Ken Johnson that when you do diagonal parking, you don't want to do it. He explained, the City Engineer had said, you don't do it on uphill, because you can't, you don't have anything to block a runaway car. So on the downhill slope, you're curbing it. And so if, if there is room in that block to put diagonal parking just on that one side of the street, that could potentially provide way more parking there than parallel. And maybe it's, it's not feasible there, but as long as we're looking at that area, why not? And, and if it ekes out two more spaces than we have, that's gonna make a lot of the neighbors very happy to have two more spaces, trust me. And, and I mean additionally, i- if you were to carry it further, I'd be looking at San Francisco Avenue to do the same on one side. That would create, and, and again, the width of the streets, the engineering, that's not our department, but it would really be, it's a good time to maybe take a look at this.
Yeah, we can definitely pass that on to the City Engineer to, to take a look at.
And, and tell him a lot of residents would really appreciate that, I think they would.
Anyone else? Okay, uh, I have no other comments either, so, um, can I get a motion to approve the applicant's request?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is items initiated by staff.
Oh, yes, thank you. We'll start with the fun one, is the introduction of our new associate planner, Jeremiah Robbins. We snatched him away from San Jose, and let's do our benefit and our, uh, our pleasure to have him, he's been a real, um, only been here a couple, maybe a month, six weeks? Time flies, um, but you'll be seeing a lot of Jeremiah's smiling face at these meetings going forward. If you want to give him a chance to rebuttal, feel, feel free.
Good catch, don't let him get away. All right, all the better.
Welcome.
Um, just had a couple other, and I don't know if we've talked about this, it's the last time we were all together, it seems like a while ago. The council did approve the Baylands Cleanup General Plan Amendment that you considered quite some time ago, I think in the fall, but it just got to council, I believe, earlier in January. So that was adopted with very little, um, no changes, pretty much as recommended. The retail cannabis will be coming back to council either in early or late March at this point. We'll see how that plays out. And I expect that the city will be releasing the, um, notice of EIR preparation for the next, um, iteration of the Brisbane Bayland Specific Plan. And that would be followed by a scoping meeting, a public scoping meeting sometime. So if it does get released next week, probably looking at a scoping meeting the first week in March as well. We'd provide, you know, notice, you'd certainly invited to attend as residents, but we won't be doing a formal hearing on the scoping before the planning commission. I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, items initiated by the commission? Okay, there are none. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn to the next regular meeting of Thursday, February twenty-seven, two thousand twenty?
I make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.